I declare open this hearing of the Senate Environment Communications References Committee Inquiry into Australia Post. I begin by acknowledging the traditional owners and the land on which we meet and pay our respects to their elders past and present. On behalf of the committee, I would like to welcome you all here today. Today, the committee will be conducting its hearing in person and via video conference. Thank you in advance for your patience with any of the technical issues we might encounter along the way. For the benefit of all participants, I'm the Chair, Senator Sarah Hansen Young, and I'm joined in the room today by Senators Carr, Senators Hanson, Kitchen, Van and Henderson and Canavan, and Senator Mackenzie, oh, oh, sorry, and Senator O'Neill. So you've joined us, thank you.
So many people.
And we're joined by video conference by Senator Mackenzie. This is a public hearing and a hand side transcript of the proceedings is being made. The hearing is also being broadcast via the Australian Parliament House website. The committee has allowed the media the opportunity to gather footage at the beginning. There is pulled cameras now in the room. And we look forward to people being able to access the live feed via the committee's proceedings on the Parliament House broadcast. Before giving, before the committee starts taking evidence, I remind all witnesses that in giving evidence to a committee, they are protected by parliamentary privilege. It is unlawful to threaten or disadvantage a witness on account of evidence given to a committee. Any such action may be treated by the Senate as contempt. It is also contempt to give false or misleading evidence to a committee. The committee generally prefers evidence to be given in public, but under the Senate's resolutions, witnesses have the right to request to be heard in private session. If a witness objects to answering a question, the witness should state the ground upon which the objection is taken, and the committee will determine whether it will insist on an answer, having regard to the ground on which it is claimed. If the committee determines to insist on an answer, a witness may request that that answer be given in camera. Such a request, of course, may be given at any other time. Those participating remotely are reminded to please state their full name each time before speaking to assist our hand side staff, and also to mute their devices when they do not have the call. I now welcome Christine Holgate and two other witnesses. I understand that information on parliamentary privilege and the protection of witnesses and evidence has been provided to you. For the hand side record, could I please get you all to state your full names and the capacities in which you appear today? Might start with you, Ms. Holgate.
My name's Christine Holgate. I'm here as in personal capacity.
Thank you.
Teresa Forthorpe in a private capacity. In full transparency, I'm also an employee of Australia Post. I am not appearing in that capacity today, and I am on annual leave to be here.
Thank you.
My name's Angela Cramp. I'm here as a taxpayer of Australia, and I'm not here representing the LPO group. I will be later than today, but today I'm a private citizen and a taxpayer.
Okay. Thank you. I now invite you to make a short opening statement. I'm not sure, Ms. Cramp or Ms. Forthorpe, whether you have statements, but I understand Ms. Holgate does.
Thank you, Senators. No, Teresa and Angela won't be making opening statements. Thank you, Senators, for the opportunity to be here today. I have committed to be part of this process. I do not want what happened to me to happen to any individual ever again in any workplace. I have only ever wanted what was best for Australia Post and its people. I have passionately wanted to help the organisation grow and to support the communities of Australia to thrive. Yet, I lost my job, a job that I loved, because I was humiliated by our Prime Minister for committing no offence and then bullied by my chairman, Lucio de Bartolomeo. Unlawfully stood me down in the public direction of the Prime Minister. This made my leadership at Australia Post untenable and seriously threatened my health. I have done no wrong, for the bullying of me was far from over. I was subjected to a biased investigation and intimidated with constant threats of further allegations and criticism. Throughout this time, my health had deteriorated to the point where I could not find my voice to fight back. This is a day the Chairman of Australia Post and the other men involved in what happened to me will be held to account. It is thanks to the determination, courage and strength of the two women besides me, as well as Sue Davis, the EGM of People and Culture from Australia Post, is that I am here today, along with many parliamentarians who have fought for the truth to be told. Senators, I know you've all read my submissions, so I will not take too much time up discussing those in my opening remarks. Suffice to say, if it was not for this committee, Australia Post Chairman would likely have succeeded in getting away with lying to the Australian people, to their Senate, to the employees and partners of Australia Post, not least would he ever been held to account for the bullying of myself. My evidence is backed up by hard facts, written proof. It is undeniably independent witnesses. It is uncontroversial. In contrast, the evidence of the Chairman of Australia Post is fabricated. He fabricated the agreement by myself to stand down, and he continues to do so today. I believe he did so to save his own position from political peril, and because it amounted, he would never be called to account for his actions. He has also lied about very important matters relating to the future of Australia Post. This must not be allowed to stand. Australia Post is a vital national asset, and one which I passionately believe serves the Australian people. Their economy and their individual communities is hugely important ways. I was honoured to lead it, and I was devastated to be driven out of it. But its employees, delivery partners and community post offices will always have a stamp on my heart. I have said consistently since October 22 that I have done nothing wrong. I had not agreed to stand down. I had provided comprehensive written proof to support these statements to Australia Post, and its Chairman have provided evidence of any kind. They have not. They have produced lies. I am sure that this will become even more apparent during the course of the committee's work. The simple truth is, I was bullied out of my job. I was humiliated and driven to despair. I was thrown under the bus so the Chairman of Australia Post could curry favour with his political masters. But I'm still here, and I'm stronger for surviving it. Thanks to the committee and the amazing support I have received from so many Australians and people all around the world, I am making a stand today for those who don't have a platform I've been given, to fight against the bullying they have endured. There are so many Australians who have told me their own stories of being victims of workplace harassment. Today, I stand here in support of them and all the people who've been intimidated but had no voice. I'm also providing the committee with three additional submissions. The first is a comprehensive chronology of the key events to aid the senators to be able to follow this process quite carefully, because I understand it's complex. The second contains further details of the unlawful standing down, including a legal opinion from the Senior Counsel, Ingmar Taylor, who confirms my four standing down was unlawful and repudiated my contract. The third submission gives clarity on the secret BCG review, a review the Chair, the executive team and I was extensively involved with, a review which, if the government had supported, would have ravaged jobs and services Australia Post offers. I objected rigorously to the BCG recommendations, and I still do. It is completely the wrong strategy for Australia Post, to its customers, to the teams and to the communities. I believe Australia Post can have a strong future if it's allowed to grow and interference is minimised. The recent results of Australia Post are evident that we were on course for securing this. I urge the senators to ensure our national treasure, Australia Post, is protected, that lying and bullying is stopped, and those who've perpetuated it are held to account. I ask at this for those not just of us sitting here, but for those many families who depend on Australia Post every day, and in respect to all of those who have suffered workplace bullying. May the legacy of this Senate inquiry be bullying and intimidation, lying will not be tolerated. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. I look forward to answering your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Holgate. Could I ask you to table your opening statement?
I have done so this morning.
Thank you. So we all have a copy of that. Ms. Holgate, the last time you were in this room was on the 22nd of October last year, of which only hours later the Prime Minister demanded that you go. Is it what you are putting to us today that you were forced out because you resisted the further privatisation of Australian Post services?
I don't know why the Prime Minister took the action he did. I'm putting to you today, I was unlawfully stood down, and my contract got repudiated. I've only ever asked for respect, and I have never been allowed it. So maybe I answer that slightly differently. I don't know why the Prime Minister did what he did, but I was unlawfully stood down, I believe, because he instructed it to do so.
Having watched how the Prime Minister has engaged in relation to members of his Cabinet, members of his government, and men who have been accused of behaving badly, do you feel that there's a difference in the way you were treated by the Prime Minister?
I absolutely do, Senator. No one afforded me the opportunity. The Chair spoke to me briefly twice. I'm told the Prime Minister was not briefed properly. I still do not believe that really allows those actions to take place. You would have hoped, I don't just lead Australia Post, I co-chair the Trade Board for this country with one of his ministers. You would have hoped I may have been deserved the opportunity for either the Minister or the Prime Minister to speak to me. Neither did. The Prime Minister has never spoken to me, and I'm sure his team has looked through comprehensively the evidence I provided to the Senate.
I think to anybody watching how this issue has unfolded, there seems to be a stark difference of treatment towards you versus some of the blokes in his own ranks.
Well, I don't want to be rude here, but on November 9, just as there was another Senate estimates inside this very room, at the same time ran a Four Corners programme. And following that programme, the Prime Minister was asked about the behaviour of two of his ministers. His response was, that was two years ago. I gave four watches in reward to people who brought an incredible contribution to Australia Post two years ago. That was never shared. He has people in his Cabinet. He has people in Members of Parliament who have been accused of the most terrible atrocities to women, proven with one of them, and they're allowed to stand and still remain in their jobs and represent our country. I was forced to stand down.
We're going to go to questions from other senators, and I imagine there's going to be, everyone's got a lot of questions, so we're going to share it around, and everybody will have an opportunity to come back around again. So we'll keep it, keep it short so that we can get through as much as we possibly can. I'm going to go to the Deputy Chair first, Senator Van, and then we'll go to Senator Carr.
Thank you very much, Chair, and welcome. Ms. Holgate, just going to the transcript, the hand side of the day when you were giving evidence, and in response to a question from Senator Kitchen, you said, "I have not used taxpayers' money. We are a commercial organisation." Is that a fair reflection of what you said on that evening?
I think it is well documented, Senator Van, what I said and my response to those questions.
Thank you. In, on reflection, do you still hold that view?
I've actually already spoken about that in my statement on November 2. I'm sure you will have read that. It is inside our submission.
So, but I'm here in the hearing, so just trying to get on the record. Do you still hold that view that you did not take taxpayer money, that Australia Post was, is a commercial organisation?
I hold the view that Banket Post bought in that very, that very initiative, $220 million, that saved the post offices and raised $22 million in GST. I have apologised if any words I said could offend anybody. Senator, I'm sure you're aware of the many articles that are covered in the media at the moment about Members of Parliament taking flights of, one with 69,000 per. I rewarded four people within my responsibilities.
Sure. That's, that's not what I'm asking. And I'm not asking about the appropriateness of the gifts. That's not what I'm asking. I'm asking, do you still hold the view that Australia Post does not use taxpayer money?
I have already apologised for that statement, Senator.
So your answer is, no, you don't still hold that?
Australia Post is owned by the people of this country. Many of them are taxpayers.
So putting aside that, you know, you, it seems on evidence that you are within your rights to award those watches, do you understand now, though, that the, what caused offence in this place, and I was in, in this chamber, in this, on this committee, on the night that those questions were put to you by Senator Kitchen, do you understand now that it was that statement that caused the offence, not the watches?
Senator Van, I really do hope you are not saying to me that I was hung in Parliament, humiliated, not just hung, run over by a bus and reversed again, because after four hours of a Senate process, I may have made a wrong comment, when it would be perfectly okay to abuse women, and that would be acceptable?
I think you're conflating a number of issues there. But, so, just to be clear, you don't stand by that statement any longer?
I have already apologised for that statement, Senator.
Thank you. That's all, that's all I have, Chair.
Thank you. Senator Carr.
Thank you very much, Chair. As Holgate, the previous estimates, I made it very clear that my concerns in regard to the operations of Australia Post were not directed in any personal way whatsoever to yourself. My concerns were that the Australia Post was pursuing a strategy that appeared to me to be in conflict with its community service obligations. We had a conversation about those things. And I've read your submissions carefully, so please accept that as given. But, and so having read them, I, I'm particularly impressed with the public commentary about the fact that you have had such a distinguished public career in terms of managing billion dollar corporations. You've, you've got a glowing CV in high performance roles, and that you have been subject to what I think is grossly unfair treatment, grossly unfair treatment in terms of public abuse, through the abuse of parliamentary procedures. And I raise with you a number of matters that concern the operations of Australia Post, in particular, the strategic plans that have been developed. And I now read in your supplementary submissions, the concerns that you actually had about the Boston Consulting Group. I'm just wondering, can you just get in the context of what Senator Hanson has put to you, so Hanson Young has put to you, my apologies, that to what extent do you think your treatment is a question of gender, and to what extent is it a question of politics?
Senator, it's a very hard question for me to answer, and you probably have a better view than me on the latter one at least. But I think it would be fair to say, I've never seen a media article comment about a male politician's watch, you know, and yet I was depicted as a prostitute for making those comments. Humiliated. I have never seen any male public servant depicted in that way. So do I believe it's partially a gender issue? You're absolutely right, I do. But do I believe the real problem here is bullying and harassment and abuse of power? You're absolutely right, I do.
And, and it gives, so the question here about the political agenda, because I concur with your assessment, I think you have been treated in a highly discriminatory manner. And I do firmly believe there is an issue of gender in the way you've been treated as compared to other people, other public servants, other politicians. With your submission here, you point out, "We believe the strategy in regard to the Boston Consulting Group would, the strategy, you obviously took a counter view to that of being presented", and you've tabled documents, which are now being published by the committee, I understand that they're available to the public, which is a report that would have seen implemented massive job cuts, five, maybe up to as many as 8,000 on one of the scenarios here, 8,000 job cuts, closure of suburban post offices, 190 suburban post offices, massive reductions in service delivery standards, and fundamentally shifted the community service obligation, would require, I would have thought, substantial legislative change to secure those things. Now, these are matters that we pursued through the estimates, and, and I'm just wondering, were you at any point able to express your view in terms of your proceedings through the Senate processes, or was there an impediment to you being able to argue the management's case as to why you opposed the Boston's Consulting Group recommendations?
Senator, I know you will appreciate this, and I apologise that I was never able to speak up before, because I do appreciate you've asked me many times. But we are silenced. We are told very clearly that we are not allowed to speak in it. And I think even at the last Senate hearing on March 23, when several people ran this table, asked questions, the Senator, Senator Hume, who was sitting here, stopped those questions and stopped Australia Post being able to answer them. I believe this is such an important review. We should stop having secret reviews. Australia Post is an asset for all Australians. Senator, I actually think the implications are worse than what you think, if you don't mind.
Please.
It talks about 190 post offices to close. You see, there are 4,327 post offices or postal points. Of those, approximately 725 of them are what we would call, Australia Post own them. They're predominantly metro, so the hundred and something you were referring to are the ones that Australia Post own.
Yes.
Then, if you step back from that, there are approximately 3,600 which belong to mum and dads, just like Angela, people who on average invest a million dollars to take a post office licence. They can't force their closure so easily. But if they take away their services, those people will go bankrupt. And I'm sure the reason why the post offices have campaigned so passionately behind me is because they know it's not just about Banket Post, it's about them remaining viable and being able to pay their debts. So those numbers are not inside this submission, because if the government makes arbitrary decisions that impact the community post offices, they do not have to deal with the debt the mum and dads do.
So you spoke of being silenced, and I'll come back to the specifics you've raised about what the impact of the Boston Consulting Group was, and why I was so concerned about that. Who were you silenced by?
I was silenced by the Chair.
And how was that expressed to you?
I think if, Teresa, you can just find the page, if you refer to the letter dated the 24th of October, supplied to me on the 25th of October, you will see there's a letter there from the Chairman telling me I am not to speak to anybody. I was allowed to speak to Sue Davis, who is the EGM of People and Culture. I was allowed to speak to John Cox, who then actually was told he was not allowed to support me in information, and some immediate people to support my health. I was not to talk to employees, not to speak to the media, I was not to speak to board members, and I was not to speak to customers. It was held very clear, they silenced me.
So the Chairman has indicated that he knew nothing much about this report. It was all a bit of a mystery to him. Now, your submission suggests that he actually got copies of the report, the final report. Have I understood you correctly?
Senator, I, I struggle with the Chairman's evidence on this important report, because the report was commissioned... Because the report was commissioned to actually inform the Chair, myself and the Board. The Chairman had numerous copies of the report. The Chairman travelled to Canberra with me, and he met with BCG and senior members of both departments. We discussed it at multiple board meetings. We had a five-hour board meeting on the BCG review. I find it almost impossible to believe a Chairman could forget that. Let's just say he did. Let's just say he forgot. A lot happened in Covid. My next problem is, though, I wrote to him and told him I did not support his evidence. And detailed on December the 2nd that I believe he'd misled Parliament. And then he returned to Parliament and again said, nope, can't remember reading it, may have flicked through it. Well, why would you pay 1.3 million for a report you've just flicked through? But clearly, there is documented evidence that he was very involved. And in fairness to Senator Kitchen, every one of my expenses is on the company website. And you can see on that website the flights that were bought under the office of the CEO for both him and I to travel to Canberra on the dates that I've put down. So there is no denying of his involvement.
You've indicated to us on previous occasions, you did have serious concerns about the implications of the report, but you were not able to provide evidence to the Senate as to why that's the case. And you go on to say in your submission, as I've understood you correctly, perhaps you can enlarge on this, you say that the implementation of this report is not the way forward. Is that, have I understood you correctly?
I strongly believe that.
Can you explain to us why that is the case? Why do you think it would be detrimental to Australia's Post if the report on the privatisation, because this report actually is a blueprint for the privatisation of Australia Post?
Well, I have many views on that, Senator, and I should try and be brief. But I think we can just look to the UK model, who split out parcels and privatised it, left the post offices behind. The post offices went bankrupt, and they, I'm sure you're very aware of the multiple legal cases they had to take against the government. That's number one. But number two, most importantly, this is a national asset that is critical to the infrastructure of our country, particularly for rural and regional Australia. We are one of the largest employers. Almost 100,000 families are employed at Australia Post. 80,000, including our direct contractors, and about another 20,000 more through people who primarily work for us. We know that for every person we employ, there are two more jobs in the economy. So when you take down one Australia Post person, you're taking three jobs away. That is a massive negative impact. We always argued we could grow, and each year we have done. We overachieved our targets. It's not without its challenges, of course it's not. But may I just point out, which is a fact that absolutely annoys me. The letters business was 1.8 billion dollars last year. And yet we are just disregarding it. It is still a really important asset, particularly for small businesses.
And, and the loss of the priority paying mail, the loss of the capacity to actually meet community service obligations. I mean, as I read it here, it would see major disruptions in terms of employment opportunities in, in, right across the country, that would require substantial changes in, in terms of service delivery standards. Is that, have I understood that correctly?
Absolutely, Senator. And I think you will also be aware, it would also require significant industrial relations changes. I've believed and argued for many years that our posties can have a new job, and they can be involved in carrying more parcels. We do not just have to outsource work, and often, as we all know, because we've all seen the recent cases in other organisations, where people in this type of work often don't have permanent work contracts. And we know the importance for these families to keep their jobs. And they can do other work in Australia Post. I strongly believe there is a growth opportunity for this organisation if we are allowed to pursue it.
And, and that's the thrust of your evidence. Now, can I just come back to the point about the regulations? This was the real nub of the matter here. No, I'll just let me finish. I'll come back if I need to. Just, see, we were told these were temporary. This report suggests that the government's plan, I'm not saying your plan, but the government's plan was to make them permanent. To restructure Australia Post in such a way as to transform it from a, a public agency with legislated community service obligations into something entirely different, and using the regulations for the basis of that. Now, you say, in your submission here, as I read it, you actually question whether or not we need to continue with the regulations on an ongoing basis. Have I understood you correctly on that?
I think there are some serious questions before the regulation is continued. I absolutely supported the temporary relief. We could not have delivered without it. It was the most, Covid was an incredibly challenging time. We absolutely needed the temporary regulatory relief. But our country is actually recovering from Covid. And I think there are some serious questions, I've listed some inside my submission, that I think are important. I know, Senator, because many people write to me every day, that, for example, priority mail, now that Qantas is getting their flights back up, and if they're not got them all up, I'm sure they're pretty, you know, I think we've all seen the CEO commit to be running at full operations by the end of this year. That is a service that really should be brought back, and if not, something very similar. Because it's critical for small businesses, and it hurts the printing industry if it's not there.
Well, I'll put it to you, perhaps the real reason for your treatment, on top of what you've already said, the substantive political reason is because you opposed this programme of cutting and privatisation. Is there not some substance to that concern?
I think it would be fair to say, Senator, I wasn't popular.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Carr.
Senator Mackenzie. We can't hear you. We can see you.
Ah, there you are, Chair.
Great.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You've got the floor.
Uh, well, thank you, Chair, and thank you, Ms Holgate, for your evidence today. Uh, thank you on behalf of community post office and the country. Um, what a turnaround to their financial sustainability, thanks to your leadership. I've just, a lot of the questions I have have already been asked. My question's really got stepping out, that you acted within your authority in the purchasing of the gifts for your senior executive team. There's been a lot of commentary, obviously, that this didn't pass the pub test, but it was all within the rules. Could you talk us through the detail of that, please?
It absolutely was in my authority. There is no question that it wasn't in my authority. They were rewards for four people. And they were, the Chairman was aware, you've seen the card, I'm sure I don't have to tell everybody, I think it's been well-publicised in many newspapers of the words of both myself and the Chair. It was a moment of great pride in our people. I could have given those, awarded those four people up to $150,000 each as a bonus. I chose not to. I chose to give them a watch. It was a moment of pride for them. And those, those gifts, rewards were given on, I can't remember the date, but it is inside my submission, so I'm sure you've got that date.
Yep.
But it was a moment of celebration in the organisation. And they were signed off by the CFO at the time. Fringe benefit tax was in there. They were audited. There was never any question whatsoever from anybody that they were not in any way breach of any policy.
So no Australia Post employees or board members raised concerns with you about the purchase of these gifts?
None whatsoever. On the contrary, everybody was very proud. It was a defining moment in our history. It was the largest capital investment into the company by an outside organisation. It was critical, Bridget. Angela can tell you. I would, I would love the opportunity for Angela, if that's okay, to answer part of this question.
I'm going to ask Angela this when she actually has her chance representing licensed post offices, because you're right, not just for the taxpayer with the $70 million dividends, not just for the financial sustainability of our LPO network. For rural and regional Australians to actually be able to do their banking in their local community, it's transformative. So I, I think people that can head down their local bank on a tram or a train take it for granted, those of us that have seen bank closures across the regions for decades. This was very transformative at a very local level, too.
Senator Mackenzie.
I wanted to just go, oh, sorry.
Senator Mackenzie, 55% of communities of Australia no longer have a bank. This, this particular service lost $48 million in the year prior. And before CBA committed to actually work with us. And Mark Corda from Corda Mentha actually attended meetings with the banks to evidence that that loss was real. So we were in face of closing the service, and this transaction saved that service, bought that important investment into the post offices, and very importantly, it enabled the post offices to have a new technology platform. They'd had none in 30 years, none. So, I mean, I just think that's staggering, that we were actually letting them operate on such an old system.
I, I think this committee, the decade I've been involved in politics, has done a lot of work in the Australia Post piece, critical of previous CEOs, in particular, Mr Fahouh, who didn't have an investment approach, or to see the opportunities available out in rural and regional networks. So, so thank you. I just wanted to briefly go to within Australia Post around sorts of gifts. There's been some commentary that this was an anomaly, that this is my understanding from your submission is that's quite the contrary. Were gifts given to senior executives in lieu of cash bonuses previously within the organisation? Was this quite part of the course?
Angela, you were in the organisation?
It wasn't given to the licences, but we were certainly aware of a lot of excessive expenses. We have often requested information about how many people that were not related to business of Australia Post were taken on a five-star luxury jaunt to the Olympics in 2012, sorry, with Mr Fahouh, five-star, first class. And it was at, we believe, licensee's expense, taxpayer's expense. Like, and it'd be interesting to look at who the treasurer was at the time, and there was not an eyebrow raised.
Yep, we might have to follow that up. Um, just finally, I know-
Mrs Cramp, who was the treasurer at the time?
Mr Morrison.
Mr Morrison. Senator Mackenzie.
Okay, thank you. Um, I know Senator Cannavan may have some questions, but I'm just wondering, Ms Holgate, who, in your opinion, told Senator Kitchen about the Cartier watches, and why?
I don't know, Senator, and I think all senators are allowed to ask questions. That's the point of this process.
Okay, um, to understand, in the, I think the recommendation six of the Maddox review into this issue, it said, and I quote, "There was no indication of dishonesty, fraud, corruption, or intentional misuse of Australia Post buttons by any individual involved in these matters relating to the purchase and gifting of the watches." I mean, given that was the finding, in any other organisation, should you, would you have been able to go back to work?
I think that's pretty obvious. I should never have been not at work. There was nothing to justify unlawfully standing me down.
And just wanted to briefly touch on, given the timeline of events, and, you know, given yesterday's announcement, events may have overtaken. But, I mean, what, what would it take, or have taken, to have you come back to Australia Post as CEO?
Senator, I, I believe that you're aware, I've been asked by many people from all political parties about whether I would return to work, and my answer has been very consistent. I love Australia Post. There's no day, you know, that I don't admire and respect the people. But I cannot work for a Chair that lies in the Senate and does not have integrity. The Chair would have to go.
The Chair would have to go. Thank you, Chair. I have no further questions.
Okay, thank you. Senator Hanson.
Thank you very much. Thanks very much for coming, Ms Holgate, and you're it, I know it's extremely hard, and what you've been through. Do you still consider yourself to be CEO of Australia Post?
My contract has never been resolved, and many people will know that on LinkedIn, it still says CEO of Australia Post.
You handed over, or sent by email, at 10:20, 10:46 AM, a letter to the Chair and the Board, actually the Board, a letter of resignation. Can you explain that letter that you wrote?
I absolutely can, Senator. I may be able to refer you to my submission. Actually, rather than go to my main submission, I sent another document yesterday, but I could ask the senators to refer to that. It's the paper which is titled "My Response to Australia Post Submission." You will see, you will see there, detailed in there, that at 10:46, after the 10 most harrowing days of my career, I wrote to the Chair and Board of Australia Post and said I felt my position was untenable.
And I'll just clarify the date, that was November the 2nd.
That was November the 2nd. I asked in that a cover note, I said, "I'd like this to be resolved today", and I sought no financial compensation. You will see that in my submission, I give the opinion of Ingmar Taylor, who's a leading SC in employment matters, and he highlights that in my employment contract, 14.1, which I've also given to the committee, it says very clearly, "Any variation to my contract requires both parties to sign it." I think what you'll find, Senator, is at 1:30, sitting in a room with my lawyer, Brian Belling-
That's good. Can I just lead in to ask you these questions? You also provided a statement with that letter, didn't you?
That's correct, Senator.
At any point of the time that day, did you release that statement?
I released that statement after at 1:30, we were told Sky News had a copy, and we were being questioned to say, was it mine or not? At about somewhere between 2:20 and 2:30 that afternoon, after considerable media response, I admitted it was my statement.
But did you release that statement?
It was not I who leaked it to Sky News.
Right. The only one to have that statement was actually the Board.
It was, it was only the Board-
The Taulamaio.
And the people who were sitting in that room with me, which was Teresa, Brian Belling, Ross Thornton and Max Kimber. We were all in the same room.
What, if you, if we go back to the fact, as you were sitting in the room with other people, and you saw it come across on Sky News at 1:30 that afternoon. Going by the, you sent that letter through to the Board at 10:46 AM. There is, under the Australia Post submission- There is, under the Australia Post submission, 2.4.5, they said, "The Board meeting reconvened that day at 2:45 PM on the 2nd of November 2020, at which time the Board discussed the public statement released by Miss Holgate at approximately 2 PM." And Australia Post responded.
There's two things I'd like to say, Senator. Against the advice of everybody around me, I chose to attach that statement to the letter because I wanted to prove to the Board I was not criticising them or the government. Foolishly, I was trying to do the honourable thing and show them what I would say publicly so that they would support me. What happened, Senator, though, was we did not release anything at 2 o'clock.
Right.
I did not give a copy of the statement to Ross Thornton to approximately 2:20.
Correct. And that's why I'm asking you these direct, I want these answers, you know, direct answers. You did not release that statement. The only one who had the statement was the Board, himself and the Chair. You actually are denying that you released that statement. The first you had any knowledge of it being the media was at 1:30 and it could only have been released by the Chair. Yet in his statement here, he says they reconvened the meeting at 2:45 to discuss about the statement that you released. So it didn't come from them. Another thing that I want to put to you is the fact is that, under your contract, and you pointed to 10.1 of the contract, the date actually states there, what does 10?
14.1.
Sorry, 14.1. It does state that both parties, do you, have you got a copy of it there?
I have.
Okay. 14.1, and this is why I question about you still being the CEO of Australia Post. Although you may have handed over a letter of resignation as an offering, it was supposed to be for discussion by the Chair, which you said you were waiting to hear back from him. Under 14.1, it says that this document may only be buried or replaced by a document executed by both parties. By you handing over a letter of resignation does not mean that you are released from your contract. It has to be agreed upon by the Board and signed by both parties. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So therefore you are still the CEO of Australia Post by law, under your contract.
Yes.
I'm totally not sure, but what I do know is that I have signed no deed of release. They unlawfully stood me down. And I have asked many times, Pauline, to resolve this amicably.
Your lawyers have actually asked for the documentation. Because in the Chair's submission, he has stated that he has actually got copies of documents signed by you. Is that correct?
Nobody has. I have not signed any release.
He's stating that he does have documents there. You and your lawyers have asked for that. Nothing has been forthcoming. There is no documentation that you're aware of. He has not produced any.
None whatsoever.
Right. Also about your standing down. Now, he states in his submission that you actually agreed to stand down. My understanding is that is not the case. You have always said that you would not stand down, that you would take two weeks' annual leave for the investigation to happen. Can you actually take us through what happened on October the 22nd? And his discussions with you? Or did you have discussions with him that day?
I did have two discussions with him prior to the incident in Parliament. There were, I have asked, by the way, just for the record, well, and forgive me, but I copied the secretary into some of this communication. He may have informed you as a committee. But I asked the Australia Post, could I have my phone records approximately a month ago, the in and out of my phone that day? They would only send me my outgoing calls and not my incoming calls. There was approximately, I think, 70, 80 calls. And I clearly have got a copy of my emails. I've given you them all post the time that we're talking about. He said I agreed to stand down just around that time. I have never agreed to stand down. I think it was pretty obvious when the Prime Minister said, "If she won't agree to stand down, she can go." He was very aware I hadn't agreed to stand down. My phone was constantly ringing. And I have no problem with this committee seeing my phone records.
Just to be clear, sorry, Senator Hanson, just to be clear, we're talking about October the 22nd.
October the 22nd.
In the afternoon, after what happened that day.
So, you, just to be clear, we might ask Australia Post to table your phone records, in and out, for October the 22nd.
I would absolutely welcome that. I've asked for it. I copied Stephen on in it. I also asked for the phone calls for Mr Tony Nutt. And I asked for the phone calls for Mr Lucio de Bartolomeu.
Okay, thank you, Senator Hanson.
And what you will see from my phone records is there are multiple phone calls to Tony Nutt. And I apologise to my husband in advance here. And the journey on the way home, he got three phone calls, but Tony Nutt got 14. There are two phone calls to Lucio. And I'm sure if you get my incoming phone calls, Senator Hanson, what you'll see is he called my phone while I was already on the phone with Tony Nutt, I think you'll find. I then called back and I passed my phone to Sue Davis. Sue Davis sat next to me. She was with me for every minute from when what happened in Parliament was.
So she was on the full trip with you from Canberra back to Sydney. So she actually took the phone calls, you didn't take any phone calls whatsoever.
I would oppress, I would oppress the replay back. I don't doubt that, but I did not speak to him. And I'm pretty sure, Senator Hanson, because I used to be a senior executive at Telstra. We used to work with the police very closely. Sarah Hanson Young, if you don't mind me saying, I think what would be extremely helpful if we could ask Telstra, could they have the recordings of those phone calls? Because I'm sure what you will see is that they will evidence there was no phone call with me agreeing to stand down. And Sarah Hanson, I'm sorry.
Senator Hanson.
Senator Hanson, I'm getting my names mixed up. Apologies. But Senator Hanson, may I just point one thing out to you? I have given you every email I wrote at that period of time. If you look at those emails, what you will see, that his argument is that at 5:50, my phone called him. I've never said it didn't. It was a phone call for 4 minutes 27 seconds, I think, if I recorded that fact correctly, Teresa. 4 minutes 27 seconds. If you look at the timing of the email, I wrote to the Chair. So I'm somehow on the phone to him, writing to him, saying, "I will take annual leave" because that's what Tony Nutt has told me to do. He told me to write to the Chair and formally put in for annual leave, which is the phone call right before the one to the Chair. It would mean in 33 seconds, he got that email, opened it, read it, convinced me that I would be paid and I didn't need to do that, I didn't need to use up my annual leave and that I agreed to stand down. I put it to you, I've never heard so much nonsense in all of my career that a woman of 35 years of a career, in 33 seconds, is prepared to do that.
He also states in that note, there was a meeting with the Board and that he actually told the Board, he convinced you actually stand down. That wasn't the case whatsoever because during this whole afternoon and multiple phone calls, emails to Tony Nutt, who's actually a non-executive member of the Board, he actually spoke to you how to draft this notice to the Board about taking leave. And that was, and how do you then say to his suggestion, in his submission, that he convinced the Board, that he, well, he told the Board that he convinced you to actually stand down? And at no point, because your email stated that you were only taking leave?
Senator Hanson, detailed in my submission, I have given you all the times I talked to Mr Nutt. I've given you emails that took place with Mr Nutt after I supposedly agreed with him. Like, minutes, seconds later, I was still drafting a statement with Ross Thornton and calling Ross. My next call, straight after the one to Lucio de Bartolomeu, is actually to Tony Nutt, of which he's still helping me draft a statement. I do not believe a Board meeting took place. And I put it to you, two things. First of all, I wrote to Australia Post and asked for evidence of this Board meeting. I wanted to know who dialed in and who approved that statement. Well, I wrote again at the weekend and copied Stephen, the Senate Secretary, on that letter because I asked could they send it to Stephen so it could be shared with you at the same time. I have nothing to hide. We got a reply email that told me they're allowed 30 days to consider it. Well, if that Board meeting took place, it would be a minute that would be held on diligent. It was five months ago. That's the first problem. The second problem I had, why was Tony Nutt still engaging in emails, phone calls and text messages with me throughout that evening, helping me draft a statement to stand down, not to stand down, sorry, to take annual leave? I think the final one was something, you've got a copy, what page is it?
Page 21 of the submission. Of the submission, of the original submission, yes.
Apologies, there's a lot of pages, I think I've given you 300. Why either Tony Nutt was deliberately misleading me, engaging with me, or there was no Board meeting? And I put it to you, there was no Board meeting because nobody has ever given any concrete proof. My lawyer and I have asked continuously for evidence of me standing down. There has been none.
I want to go to the watches, the $20,000. You had a, you had an account up to $150,000, didn't you, that you could actually sign up on?
I had a signing authority at $50 million, but I was allowed to give rewards for up to $150,000, each person.
Rewards up to $150,000. The, there has been evidence from Maddox, who actually did the investigation, saying that the former Board had no knowledge of it and they did not approve it. Isn't it true that the Board didn't have to go through the Board and they didn't have to approve the buying of the watches? Is that correct?
Absolutely correct. And I think it is an absolute nonsense for all the CEOs around this country who are leading an $8 billion business, would be going to Board members to sign off a 5,000 reward. It is incomprehensible. It would mean the CEO has absolutely no power to do the duty of their job.
The former CEO has sort of, what can I say? He didn't want to come outright and say that he knew about the watches. He sort of denied it. He's hummed and hard about it. And yes, he did, and no, he didn't, and it wasn't approved. But here I have a photograph of those, of the cards, and it says, written from, it was at Stan?
John Stanhope.
Yeah. "To Anna, thanks for the part you played in convincing the three major banks on the value we bring to the customer. Great work, well done."
Just to be clear, Senator Hanson, I think you said the former CEO, you mean the former Chair.
Thank you very much, yes, the former Chair. So actually, he did know about the watches. He did turn up that morning, didn't he?
He did.
So for them to turn around and say that the current Board, to say now, they would never have approved it, the fact is that they don't have to approve it. You have the authority to actually give out those rewards as you did with the watches. Can I also?
Senator Hanson, may I have an opportunity?
Yep.
I think Mr Stanhope is not here and I do not believe has put in a submission. And I feel it is very unfair on him. The Board made that statement without talking to him. The Board made that statement without talking to the company secretary at the time. Neither him or I ever have said, "We put it through the Board for approval." And yet he's been constantly misquoted. They never spoke to the CFO. It's the CFO who signs off my expenses, by the way, not I. And the current acting CEO actually signed off the annual report accounts where they were claimed as a fringe benefit tax. And so I think it is highly misleading. There were only a few of the Board members on the Board who put that statement out, who were even on the Board at the time. So you have a selective, small group of people. We never even said that, neither John or I said that. And I think they are deliberately misquoting the previous Chair.
You also have had other allegations thrown at you with regards to even $700,000 or $800,000 in plants that have actually bought. That had nothing to do with you, did it?
It did not. It was part of an agreement signed way before I joined, but it was an expense signed off by the CFO, who's the current acting CEO.
On trips that you had to take to Melbourne for meetings, that type of thing, you're actually, your flights you paid for yourself.
No, my flights are paid by the organisation. I pay all my own hotel bills.
Accommodation, your expenses and that type of thing, which you don't recover back. So you've actually given more to the company. Under the former CEO, Ahmed Fuhar, he actually incurred expenses over $11 million, wasn't it? And even with his wages, it was over $6 million. You're on a wage of 1.6?
My salary is approximately just 1.5. It's slightly lower last year because I volunteered a 20% reduction because of Covid. We all as an executive team offered to give up 20% of our pay immediately as we went through that difficult period.
And yet you've actually, through the Covid, you've actually given more to Australia Post, to the taxpayers of this nation, a better balance sheet than what Australia Post has seen for at least 10 years. And you've been pilloried with it, with these false allegations made against you. The fact is that you've said you resigned, which you hadn't done. Statements released, you've been ridiculed, harassed. Can I ask you, did the Prime Minister and did the Communications Minister and the Finance Minister know of what you were going through? And did you try to make contact with them?
Yes, I did. Yes, the, I did not try to make contact with the Prime Minister. But I, I think you will find, and Teresa will determine the exact page in my main submission, I think it's Appendix 5. You will see a chain of correspondence between myself, Senator Birmingham and Minister Fletcher. And I spoke with Minister.
You were begging for a meeting with them, weren't you, for days?
I spoke, you know, in fairness, I spoke to Minister Birmingham after I sent him that email. He suggested that I forwarded that email to Minister Fletcher and he offered to organise a meeting to help me get resolution. And I think if you read that note, and I apologise in advance, that it is rambling. And it was rambling because I was seriously ill. I was on tamazepam. I was suicidal, you know? That's why it was rambling. And Simon Birmingham and I used to co-chair the Trade Board together. So I knew him independently of his role of Minister of Finance. And that's why I sought his help. He'd just been made the Head of the Senate. And so I wrote to him and said, "Surely now that you're Minister Finance, Minister of Trade and Head of the Senate, you will help me get a resolution and stop what's happening to me." I honoured everything, Senator Hanson, they asked me to do. I just asked to be treated with respect.
Can I just clarify? You said that he offered to organise a meeting?
Yes, that's correct.
But that never eventuated?
No. And I think if you look into my evidence, you will see a copy of the text message. So he suggested I wrote to Minister Fletcher. I was away on holiday at the time, actually, when I did the call with him. So I wrote to him on the Monday morning. You will see that I wrote to, I had a phone call with him at 9 o'clock on Wednesday, November 25th. That afternoon, I chaired the Trade Board for him. Unfortunately, he got tied up with the Cabinet and couldn't make it. You will see, after my phone call that morning with him, I write to Minister Fletcher. And he did say to me on that phone call, to give him a few days, it would take him a bit of time, he had three jobs. But I didn't hear anything back. And so I'm pretty much sure, but Teresa can correct me, it was Saturday, December 5th, when I still hadn't heard anything back, which felt like a lifetime when you're going through hell, by the way. I text Simon Birmingham on his private mobile and asked him, "I heard nothing back and when could we have the meeting?" I received no reply.
Okay, thank you. Senator Hanson, have you got, we can come back around, but we do need to move on to other questions. So just last one.
Just as I ask, you know, what I think is very important, what Senator Carr went into the BBCG and I think is very important, I would like to follow that up with you. But I think what's very important is that the day of your resignation that you actually gave and the Chair came back to you and he wanted an alteration of agreement that you... that you actually would, would not take up any other employment, you could not speak about Australia Post. He actually was putting to you untenable suggestions on, on how to sign off on this and you disagreed to that. Can you just explain what he wanted you to do?
Absolutely. Senator, at the last estimates, I am aware that Senator Cannavan specifically asked the Chair on this and he said there was no variation. Again, I will, and Teresa will tell us in one moment, but detailed in my main submission in the appendices is the letter that they wrote to me. They very carefully worded that, but you will see it says "a variation to contract". You've already pointed out in my contract on 14.1 that it requires signature from both of us to have a variation. And in it, there are a set of words, which page is it, Teresa? Could I just take a moment just to give you the right exact page? There's a lot of pages. It is in page... No, it is not. Take your time, it's fine.
Is this the board, is this the letter from Australia Post, the one on 24th of October?
Some page 69 of my main submission. Thank you, Senator. So if you look at page 69, I'm going to be very honest with you. You know, I was in a state of absolute distress. You know, I had given them a copy of a statement I intended to make because I wanted to prove to them I was doing the right thing by them, the government and the company, that I wasn't just trying to get some kind of agreement and go out and bag them all. And then to have that leaked, it was pretty soul destroying. But nothing could be worse that they put out their own statement and then came back to me at quarter past four in the afternoon. And you will note there are words there, right at the bottom, it says, "Or any other financial compensation from Australia, from Australia Post." Well, my lawyer, Brian Belling, who's sitting here, instructed me not to sign the letter for three reasons. He said the letter was ambiguous, that it wasn't clear that they were releasing me immediately as I'd asked, particularly because of my health. He said the letter, he felt was unlawful because it didn't actually suggest I'd get statutory payments. But he was particularly concerned because this was an added clause on top of those inside my contract. And he was concerned that they would defame me inside the investigation process and without that ability to actually hold them accountable and potentially take legal action against them, then actually I would be left completely vulnerable. I didn't sign it and I think their actions, you know, were evidence in the following weeks that we had every right for concern.
Thank you, Teresa. Senator Kitchen?
Chair.
Oh, sorry, Senator Mackenzie, point of order?
Well, I just wanted to correct the record. The treasurer in 2012 was actually Wayne Swan.
Okay, thank you.
And I do have another question, if I may, just to follow up on Senator Hanson. Sorry, Senator Kitchen, I'll be two ticks. So your testimony, Ms. Holgate, is that Australia Post would suppose to sell off the parcels division of Australia Post? Did I hear you correct?
No, I, I did not say that. I said BCG led a review, which I think is evidence. I'm just giving you hard facts, you know? This is the BCG review. I haven't given it you all, just gave you the exact summary and a page, but I think it's pretty self-explanatory. It was their review. And Senator, it is not the Board of Australia Post who was putting that through. That was a review and I think Sarah Hume said they were still considering it. Janu, sorry, I apologise. There's been no direction from the government, you know, so I can be completely clear, or from the Board of Australia Post. It was a review prepared by BCG. But in it has some very disturbing recommendations and ones that I did not support.
Thank you, Senator Mackenzie. Senator Kitchen, please.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you very much for your attendance today. I'm actually going to start with Ms. Cramp, if I can. Ms. Cramp, how many $5 notes have been sent to the Prime Minister?
We would love to know that.
Well, I would like to know it too because I put a question on notice in on the November 2 to the Prime Minister's office. And unfortunately, despite the standing orders giving 30 days for responses to be given to questions on notice, the Prime Minister's office has not answered my question on notice either.
We suspect there is many thousands of people who would like an answer to that.
Can I ask you, do you have any, as the head of your organisation, do you have any sort of a rough estimate of how many $5 notes were sent?
I am not here as the head of my organisation. I am here as a taxpayer. I can tell you that a lot of-
We're all taxpayers.
Yeah. A lot of taxpayers told us that they had sent it in, sent emails, sent pictures of them sending it in. We suspect thousands did.
Okay, well, maybe the Prime Minister's office will deign to respond to my question on notice and will have a better idea. In your opening statement, Ms. Holgate, you've said, "I was thrown under the bus so that the Chairman of Australia Post could curry favour with his political masters to whom he owes his position on the board." When you say political masters, are you able to be more specific?
Yes, Minister Fletcher.
Anyone else?
No, he had two, he was appointed by Minister Fletcher, Ms. Corman.
Are you aware of any personal friendship or relationship between Minister Fletcher and Mr. Dibartolomeo?
I'm not aware of any, but that doesn't mean they don't exist.
Okay, but it was never raised anywhere? You don't have any active knowledge of that?
I don't have any active knowledge of that, but I can say, Senator, that I hold responsible, the Chair of Australia Post, because he was the person who informed the Minister. He was the person who informed the Minister, who supposedly informed the Prime Minister. Although I personally struggle to believe that Minister Fletcher did not know that these watches were given two years ago for Banker Post because he's in Parliament swiping his iPad minutes before he spoke. And I gave them to his Chief of Staff, the photograph of evidence, and to Richard Windia, who as you will know attends most Senate estimates and was in the room that day. They knew why those watches were awarded and they never spoke out on the real reason.
Do you think that Minister Fletcher came by that knowledge at, on the day? Or do you think he already knew about it?
I think he knew about it.
When do you think he knew about it?
Well, he would have been listening to Senate estimates that day.
No, no, I'm saying, so you think that he knew about the watches on the day of the estimates? Or do you think that he knew about it prior to that?
I'm not, I can't really say what he knew and didn't know, but he would have known on the day. His team were in the room, Richard Windia was at the other end of the table, you know? I sent him a copy, as you will see in my evidence, and I give the text, a copy of the text message to Richard Windia and Ryan Bloxson, which was sent before they entered Parliament.
Can, just to clarify, what you're saying is that you at least attempted to inform the Minister prior to question time? And prior to the Prime Minister's statement in question time? Just be clear, we're talking before questions.
When you say, so, I mean, it's often said, and I think particularly in the last six or so months, the Board of Australia Post is an independent board. Yet when you say the Chair of the Board is sort of obeying his political masters, are you suggesting the Board is not independent?
Yes.
And can you give me some further detail around that? So I'm very interested in the fact that Tony Nutt really seemed to be running the show on the day. I would like, if we can go through the board members and you can say why they're not independent and why it is not an independent board. So starting with the Chair, you think that he owes his appointment to Minister Fletcher? I don't have a list of the, I think I can probably remember the board.
I think it's easier to do it this way, if you don't mind, Senator. May I just pick up one other quick thing? It goes back to what you asked Angela. I'm pretty sure that parliamentarians aren't allowed to receive cash and they must be returned.
Now, I have to tell you, in the way that I framed my question on notice to the Prime Minister's office, I was wondering if that would elicit that kind of response, but...
We were told it was over $20,000 $5 notes, Andrew and I were told, but we don't know, it's hearsay. Back to this question, there is only one person on the Board who've been appointed independently and that's Jan West. So everybody else was appointed by the current government.
Thank you. Senator Hanson has hopefully given me a copy of the Board, the copy of the table with the directors and executives. Can I ask, can we go through, so Mr. Nutt, for example?
I think we all know Mr. Nutt's relationship with the current Prime Minister.
Mr. Ronaldson?
He's an ex-liberal senator.
Mr. MacGyver?
He was a member of the National Party.
And actually on Clive Palmer's boat on the night of the Queensland election. Ms. Danes?
She was appointed by Mr. Fletcher.
Do you have any knowledge of any friendship or relationship between the two of, between Minister Fletcher and Ms. Danes?
I don't, but I am aware that it was Minister Fletcher's direction that she was appointed.
Mr. Dorazio?
He was a personal friend of Minister Corman.
And Ms. West is independent, Ms., in your, in your view, Ms. West is independent, is she on the independent one? What about Ms. Wilmot?
I think we all know of her strong ties to the Liberal Party. She worked for the Liberal Premier in Western Australia.
Thank you.
And Minister, Minister Corman used to work for Ms. Deirdre Wilmot.
In your view, did the ties between the Board and the Liberal Government give rise to any conflicts of interest? Did it give rise to any decisions that you thought were made that were not in the best interests of the Board, of the, of the business of Australia Post? And did you think, can you identify any examples of that? Where, where the, where the relationships overtook the benefits to the, to the organisation?
I can give you two very clear ones, which are documented inside my submission. The first one, of course, is having what happened to me by the Prime Minister. I was told, Christine, you need to understand, it was the Prime Minister. So they had to find something.
Who said that to you?
Mr. Tony Nutt.
Mr. Tony Nutt said to you, "You have to understand, this is at the request of the Prime Minister."
That's correct.
Sorry, a request to do what?
Stand me down.
To stand down.
So Tony Nutt, in fairness, actually, he was probably the most balanced person, which is, you know, clearly he has a very close relationship with the Prime Minister. But he often was the person who would be more balanced with all political parties than the other politically appointed people. And I think that's probably because of his previous life in government when he worked for Prime Minister, you know, Prime Minister John Howard. He had to work with all the political parties to be able to get law through. So he was used to working with different political parties. I think there's a second very important one, which is, and I appreciate that many people with different views about this, but the incentives for the executive team were not paid under the instruction of the government.
Sorry, were not paid under the instruction of the government?
That's correct.
So you're talking about all incentives or particular ones?
There was significant, and I'm happy to prepare this on another paper, but there is significant correspondence between, and Board Minute meetings, where it is minuted that the two Ministers instructed us that we were not to pay incentives to, at one stage, to any manager in the organisation.
Sorry, when was that?
This was in July and August this year. And there was a meeting, I think if I recall correctly, it was the 6th of August, there was a board meeting. It is in my submission, but I'm, so I'm doing this now off the top of my head. But it is detailed in my submission.
Is that in your first submission?
In my first submission, I think it's-
Is Ms. Forth, are you able to identify a page?
It was the 6th of August. Actually, can I tell you where it is detailed?
Yes.
Mr. Brian Belling, who's my lawyer, who's with me here today.
I see Mr. Belling, yes.
He sat with me, you know, in some of the most difficult days of my life and asked me, "Why would there not be any credibility that, why the Chair was not telling the truth?" He wrote to the Board, and I think probably that's an important letter to look at in response to your question, and if I may just find it. He wrote to the Board in that week, and I think it was October 27th or something like that. If I may just have a moment to find it. It's actually, it's on page 100, and if, think if you could look at that.
So it's a letter from Kingston Reed, dated 28 October 2020?
That's correct.
To, to the Chair?
Brian had written on the 27th of October and we'd had no response. And Brian was also very aware that I had written multiple times to the organisation at this time to ask them to address misleading comments about me in the paper. And they said they would not be doing that. So I had no confidence by this stage, Senator, that any investigation could in any way be fair. So he wrote on the 28th of October and in his letter, he included a section on that letter which basically frames that who was to be trusted here when the Chairman had actually, I'm sorry, Senator Hanson, you may see a comment here written about yourself, but this is fact, it's a direct quote. The Chairman wrote to the Board and told the Board that we were not to be paid incentives because Minister Fletcher was concerned about comments from Senator Hanson. And yet I went to a meeting with Minister Fletcher in September. He apologised that the executive team had not been paid. It was the following week, the details are in my submission and they're in the chronological order. My friend here can tell you the day. And in that, in that evidence, when I met with Minister Fletcher that day, in fairness, he apologised to me and said, "I'm sorry that you went through that, Christine, but we had agreed with Lucio." Now, I think it's August 6, I could tell you exactly, I'm sure it's-
Can I just clarify, Ms. Holgate? So you're saying that the, one of the shareholding Ministers had discussions with the Chair? And were those discussions always tabled to the Board?
Yes, they were tabled to the Board.
So you knew about it from a, from a document or a note or a letter?
There are letters to both shareholders' ministers in August around the ability to pay incentives or not.
This was the $8 million in incentive payments to seven senior executives, is that correct?
It was actually 4.7-
4.7 million to seven executives?
No, it was actually started with all managers. And I am going to be honest with you, Senator Kitchen, I know there are different views here, but some of these managers are actually post office managers who'd worked seven days.
I, I don't think we're talking about the same thing. I think there was a newspaper article that stated that the senior executive team was going to be given X million in bonuses. So I understand you've got different incentive schemes as you sort of move through the organisation, if I can put it that way.
I appreciate it's confusing, Senator. But if I may just step back for a moment, I'll let my colleague find the pages because I do appreciate it's very comprehensive. What happened was, if you just stepped back to the period of July and we are closing our accounts at the end of June, the 26th of June, I think that was a Friday evening, but somebody could look it up in their diary. And there was a phone call between the Chairman and Andrew Jeggas from the Department of Finance. And there was some confusion about what was going to happen. And I was asked to write to the Departments and to the staff of both Ministers to give clarity. I had put in there that I wanted to give a thank you payment to both the post offices and to the posties. I appreciate it wasn't an entitlement, but I would ask the Senate here to- I appreciate it wasn't an entitlement, but I would ask the Senate here to understand that these people had worked seven days a week. Like, it was a one percent payment, it wasn't about an entitlement. So what followed from that was a set of board meetings. And then in those board meetings, there was discussions about whether management and executives should be paid bonuses. At the beginning of August, I think it was the last Friday of July, or that, around that early. No, it must have been, what day was the first of August? Does anybody know?
No, but I don't, I don't want to, because the Chair is going to, but.
But all I want to say to you is, there was meetings with the two ministers and the Chairman. The first one, I was attending, and it was discussing all payments. The second one, the Chair was at his own, and there was a letter sent to both ministers. And following that, by the way, following that, we were told as an executive team, if we would support keeping quiet and that we supported it, not going into the accounts here. There was a meeting the following day after the board meeting, every executive team member was present, and every one of us took notes. We were told by the Chair to trust the board and that the payments would be made. In fairness, in fairness, if the regulatory relief, the temporary regulatory relief was not supported at the Senate inquiry, the payments would not be made. So that was stipulated by the Chair at that meeting. Every member of the executive team was at the meeting. And Mr Tony Nutt is very aware, because I called Tony Nutt straight after the meeting and said it was probably the worst meeting I had attended. It, following from that, then we go through what I think you're referring to. And I think what I was trying to give you there, Senator, was the background, because I think it's very important. In September, I attended a meeting with Minister Fletcher. It's part of my monthly review, and in fairness to Minister Fletcher, he was very engaged. In that meeting with Minister Fletcher, at the end of it, I asked for a private moment with him. And I said I was very disappointed, the executive team who had been promised by the board that they would be paid their incentives if they supported. It is minuted, by the way, in the board minutes, off the board meeting, I think it was August the sixth, but I will tell you in one moment.
We might, we might ask Mr Debat Olameo this afternoon about that. So it was minuted in a board meeting?
Just to be clear, you asked what day of the week the first of August was, and it's a Saturday, so I don't know.
So it's a Friday, I think it was, I have the, I could prepare a note on this. I think it was Friday the thirty first of July, we had the first meeting that I attended. The second one was the following, maybe Wednesday or something. And then the following morning, he met with them, there was a board meeting that night, and the. Could you pass me my bag? Bear with me, Senator.
But, Ms Holgate, so you were told.
The notes from the meeting.
You were told that if you were quiet, at some time, the incentive, the bonus payment would be made to you. But you should just be quiet for this, just for this period. And it was linking your bonus or the incentive payment was linked to the regulatory relief around service provision?
That's correct.
But, so when, when you start, I mean, let's say at the start of a financial year, were you given a number of KPIs? And in that, in that list of KPIs, was there a criterion around ensuring regulatory relief?
There is not in the F twenty one, there is not in the F twenty one.
So in fact, it was added?
No, that is in the previous year, don't forget, Senator, because the.
But your financial year runs one July, June thirty?
That's correct.
So if you are given a set of, you know, KPIs to achieve in order to receive an incentive payment, was getting all of us in the Senate to, to give you, to get Australia Post service provision, you know, the sending out of, the delivery of mail, that that would be made for, you know, longer time periods? That that would be acceptable? Was that initially a KPI, or was it added pretty, pretty much around when COVID was first starting? The reason I ask you this is because if it's listed at the beginning of a financial year in order to achieve a short term incentive, then, you know, if it's at, well, if it's there at the beginning, then I can accept that. If it was added on later on, and the cost of that was that you were silent, you know, if you got this, you'd get a bonus later on. I think that's starting to creep into a bit of questionable governance.
And I think it was very questionable governance, and I have my minutes.
Can I just add, especially if the shareholding minister is the one directing that?
Can we just get a question? Can we get an answer to the, to the question that Senator Kitchen has asked in relation to that thing?
Shareholder Minister, though, he had a very different point of view. So I have my notes here from a meeting that took place with all of the ET and the Chairman. It was on the sixth of August, and I know Mr Nick McDonald is coming this afternoon, he took copious notes. But so did every member of the executive team, so you can ask them all. Lucio came to us on the night before there was a board meeting, and we were told the executive team would not be getting paid their incentives, that the decision would be postponed, and it would be dependent on regulatory relief being upheld in the Senate inquiry.
And just, and just to be clear, the question from Senator Kitchen was, was that requirement of having that regulatory relief accepted by the Senate put to you at the beginning of that, of that financial year as, as one of the reasons why you would get your incentive?
It was not in our, it was not in our objectives.
When, when did it become, did it, did you know about it at a board meeting, did you?
Yes.
Which, what was the date of that board meeting?
I don't recall the date, but, but Senator, there was a board meeting on the fifth of August. And this is the, I was very disappointed, and I asked for it to be minuted, that I was disappointed with the decision of the board. And I was disappointed because I do not like having something that is not clear in the accounts. I do feel, Senator Hanson, in fairness to Minister Fletcher, I do not believe this is his account of what happened. And I have to say on this matter, if I may for one moment, because I think it's very important, and there does need to be balance, is what happened with Minister Fletcher was, in September, I went to my monthly board meeting with him. Not board meeting, you know, catch up. I go once a month, and he asks about the business. And after it, I asked for one minute. And at that one minute, I said I was extremely disappointed with how the executive team had been treated. And he apologised and said, but Christine, Lucio had agreed when he'd met with us. I'm pretty sure Lucio had met with Minister Corman and Minister Fletcher on the fourth. If it was not the fourth, it would have been the fifth of August. I do have the paper. So I, my EA, by the way, was an incredibly disciplined individual. She used to print everything, that's why I can help you do these submissions.
Just to come back, what did Minister Fletcher say?
He said, we had, we had agreed with Lucio back in August. He'd agreed that you could pay the managers if the executive forego their bonus. I said, but he couldn't have done, because he met with us the next day on the sixth of August and told us all to trust him. And so you may not have understood, but every member of the board understood what Brian Belling was putting in this letter. I actually believed Minister Fletcher when he said to me that he was confused why Lucio had not told the truth and told us we were not getting paid. I believe Minister Fletcher that that was the truth. And I think Lucio, actually, sorry, I shouldn't call him that, I apologise.
So are you suggesting that the Chairman misled the Minister?
I'm suggesting the Chairman misled the board and all of the executive team. I believe he made an agreement with both ministers.
So he took the minister's marching orders and then he misled the board?
Yes. I believe he made an agreement with both ministers, misled the board and misled myself. And that's why Mr Brian Belling put it in here, and he made it very clear that we were questioning, we wrote this, and we sent, every time we wrote to the Chair, we wrote to the whole board. Because we were questioning to the whole board, why are you supporting this man when we all know that he lied once before?
Okay. Senator Kitchen, we do have other senators and we are, we are running behind time, but it is important evidence.
Yes, and I do have some other questions as well, so if we can come. Look, I think because we are over time, are we able to truncate the lunch break? I just, I have more questions that I would like to ask.
I'll, I'll come back to you on that, but if, if I can, and go to Senator Henderson.
I probably have at least twenty minutes of questions to go on. Senator Carr has.
Can I make a suggestion, Chair? I, I think, given we've already scheduled a second hearing, it might be worthwhile to be able to, especially Ms Holgate again, following the Chair's evidence this afternoon, given that we've all got more questions.
Maybe we can have a.
Yes, can, I'm going to go to Senator, yeah, we, we might need to have a private meeting. I'll go to Senator Henderson for now, and we'll, we'll come back. Senator Henderson?
Thank you very much, Chair, and Ms Holgate, thank you so much for your time today. And I just want to express some, some of your evidence about how much you've suffered has really upset me. And I just wanted to say that I'm sure all senators feel very moved by, by that. At Senate estimates on the twenty second of October twenty twenty, Senator Kimberley Kitchen questioned you about the provision of watches as gifts for the bank at Post work. Were you given any advance notice about those questions?
No, we were not.
How do you feel about the way in which those questions were asked of you and the sort of the implications that arose out of those questions?
You know, Senator, it is a very difficult thing coming to Senate estimates when in the back of your mind, you have to be so careful that you don't say the wrong thing for people. So I think anybody who comes will say to you this amount of stress. Of course, you look back at your own, I'm sure we all do, look back at what we all say.
But I was more focused on the questions rather than your responses. How, how did you feel about the questions that you were being asked? Including when Senator Kitchen said, do you, Ms Holgate, consider it appropriate to use taxpayers' money to buy Cartier watches for already highly remunerated Australia Post executives? And that has certain derogatory implications in the question itself, inferences in the question itself.
I, I appreciate that, Senator Henderson. I feel that my submission has documented this, my statement has documented that.
But could you just.
And your apology, and your apology.
Sorry, so could you just, for the sake of the hearing today, could you just perhaps repeat your, your, just the answer that I'm asking?
I, I will, I apologise. I don't believe I answered that question as best I could have answered.
No, no, sorry, sorry, Ms Holgate. I wasn't asking you about your answer.
Sorry.
I was asking you, it's okay, I was asking you about the questioning. Did you think it was fair? The inferences that arose out of the questioning and the, and the Senator Kitchen's line of questioning. Did you think it was appropriate and did you think it was fair? The, the, what happened on that day?
In all honesty, I didn't consider whether it was fair or not fair. I absolutely respect, and Senator Carr, forgive me, but you've asked me many tough questions over my time with you.
That's my job.
And I'm about to say, that's his job.
So did you feel, though, that it was intended, there was an attempt to undermine you and suggest that you had done something wrong?
I didn't, I didn't honestly think that, but in fairness, you know, we spoke, you know, in fairness to the Senator, she spoke about Banker Post. And I think where I was so disappointed is that we discussed Banker Post, and then nobody ever raised that again. It was just about the watches. So was I disappointed about that? Yes, I was.
Ms Holgate, do you have any idea or suspicion as to the identity of any current or former Australia Post employee who would have had access to that sort of information about the watches? And, and who might have provided that information to Senator Kitchen?
Just about everybody on the nineteenth floor of Burke Street and the top one hundred managers of Australia Post, you know, knew about, knew about watches. Like, if I said to you, Senator, I mean, you worked there, Teresa, how many people would have known about the watches? Like, thousands?
Everyone, yeah.
It was no secret, so I don't feel it's fair to.
Sorry, 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 Senator Carr. Ms Holgate, you, I just want to ask you about something else, just briefly. You were instrumental in putting in place the regulatory relief for Australia Post in twenty twenty, and you have spoken about that this morning, so that the organisation could deal with the challenges of COVID. How would you assess the regulatory relief in terms of the objectives and what it has achieved? In terms of the steps that you took as CEO at the time?
Absolutely, and I, I think I do in fairness recognise that it was critical. We could not have managed this business without it. And, you know, and I think particularly for Victoria, we had a hundred and seventy five percent parcel growth, and the people were restricted to just five kilometres they could move. And so if we hadn't had that relief, we just wouldn't have been able to serve them. And it wasn't just about your shopping, by the way. One of the things that we did very early on, Senator, was actually get the right to carry medicine to the vulnerable. And my concern was without being able to operate, we couldn't get the medicine to the homes. We would, I think I got quoted as the Suez Canal coming down a drainpipe, which is probably not my best line, but I think it was very symbolic. It was critical at the time, it was absolutely critical for us to be able to operate.
And on another quiet separate issue, I just want to also acknowledge that when we last met, we spoke about the conduct of Mr Fahul when, when he was the CEO, and you apologised for that conduct. So I do want to acknowledge your compassion and your willingness to address that particular behaviour as well. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Chair, no further questions.
Thank you. Senator Canavan, you've been waiting here for a little bit.
Appreciate that, Chair, thank you, thank you very much. And thank you, Ms Holgate, for your evidence this morning. I wanted to return to your opening statement, in which you said you'd have always wanted to keep the best interests of Australia Post and, and the services they provide at the forefront here. Do you think it would be best for Australia Post if the Chair resigned or was sacked from his job, given the events of the last few months?
I absolutely believe it fundamentally is.
And, and what, on what basis do you think that sort of action should be taken? Is it the conduct of the last few months, or is it just now the best interests of Australia Post to put this episode behind us?
I think my evidence documents that there were already challenges with that Chair. By looking at the letter from Mr Debat, from Mr Brian Belling on page one hundred, I think really it's on page one hundred and one is the bulk of the evidence. You cannot have a Chair who misleads the executive, who misleads ministers, and misleads the board. We must have a Chair that both the ministers, the executives, and the people of Australia can trust. It is not about just executives having somebody, or the government having somebody. All of us, all of us in this room needs somebody that we can trust is telling the truth. And whatever people think about my evidence, even though I fundamentally stand by it, I have had to sit here and watch two Senate estimates at home with my husband, and watch the continual denying of the BCG review. I've had to read a letter given to you all on December the twenty first, where it still again says, we received a copy in its latter stages. If that is not concrete evidence, this Chair continues to lie and mislead myself, you, and the people of this country, I don't know what is.
Thank you for that, and look, I ask this next question with the, the understanding you're not a disinterested party in this issue, but to the extent you could, what are your thoughts or knowledge of the support or otherwise for the Chair within the Australia Post organisation? I mean, his, his continuing role there doing. I mean, is his continuing role there doing harm or causing division within Australia Post, to your knowledge? And I'm not going to insist on an answer, but Ms. Thorpe, if you'd like to provide any evidence to this, I realise the difficult position you're in, but I do think it's relevant here to the continuing good governance of Australia Post.
Senator, I don't know, well, many headhunters have called me and said to me they've never had a CEO before, when the franchisees are arguing to bring them back, and the unions go on the news and say she's been treated unfairly. I have had thousands and thousands of letters from our people saying what has happened to me is wrong. And if someone was in Burke Street today, I think you'll find the floors are full of people wearing white jackets. It is not about a political standing, it's about workplace bullying, and our people have not supported what has happened to me. Angela later on will address you, not as an individual, but as a Chair of the LPOs, with other members of her board. If that is not evidence of the divide that this is causing, I knew if I did not resign, not only would there be more harm to me personally, and I was seriously concerned how long I could take it, but I knew it was causing great damage. I had customers calling me up, saying, "Just go back in the office and get back to work", and the government's aware of that, you know, and I'm not criticising anyone for saying that, but everybody was aware of it. That is not good for our business. Our employees were turning up at my house, my husband will tell you, "They created a barricade in our road to stop people getting to me." This is ordinary, everyday mums and dads. This is not high-paid executives or politicians. This is people in communities. That's why the Chair of Australia Post must go, not because of me, because he's lied to you all.
Thank you, thank you for that. Ms. Thorpe, as I mentioned, I'm not going to insist, but did, did you have anything you wanted to add about the current climate of Australia Post?
Thank you, Senator, for your question. In relation to my capacity here today, I'm not representing Australia Post, but I will say I am here personally because I, I believe what has happened and the effects on the organisation is, is not good. And I'm here personally representing Christine Holgate. Yep.
Thank you for that. I just want, I know Senator Hanson raised this to some degree earlier, but I wanted to go to this, or it came up in questioning from Senator Hanson, I wanted to go specifically to the testimony that Mr. Di Bartolomeo, you'd think I do better with Italian pronunciations, mentioned at last estimates. When I asked him, I asked him specifically, in a direct quote, "Did you ask her to accept any conditions beyond those which were..." her being yourself, of course, Ms. Holgate. "...her to accept any conditions beyond those which were already outlined in a contract? Did you or anyone from the board?" And the Chair answered, "No." And then I further asked, "You did not or anyone from the Board of Australia Post ask Ms. Holgate to accept any conditions on her resignation or standing aside beyond what was in the contract?" And he confirmed there was no additional conditions. That, to me, seems directly contrary to the letter you have provided to us, or the email from the Chair, saying, and I directly quote from his email to you, saying, "In accordance with your contract of employment, please sign below to vary the contract of employment to give effect this agreement." And that, is that, is that, in your view, clear misleading of the Australian Senate by the Chair?
It is one more of many examples, and I think I have also included in my submission to you, I'm looking at the Secretary because I believe it was in the submission yesterday in my response to Australia Post, two letters from Allens, who were under the direction of the Australia Post Chair, they're on December 16th, those two letters, and I think they evidence my concerns I spoke about earlier, because they evidence that they do not believe, because they gave me no payment, they could not hold me to 12 months, or if I wanted to be released earlier, I had to sign that I would take no legal action against them. And they're evidenced in those two letters. I don't, I actually believe, this is in the instruction of the Chair, I doubt the board even know about it, in fairness to everybody else. So I don't know what pages that they're on, that was in the submission of yesterday.
Page 23 and 24.
Of the, my response to Australia Post.
If I could play devil's advocate here, though, I think, you know, just to defend or put the position of maybe what the Chair would say here, to put to you, he did go on to say in his evidence that there were no conditions placed on her, in fact, we were releasing her from conditions she had to us, to give us the six months' notice. So that was in, that was just after the questions I'd asked, so he sort of clarified his answer and said, "Well, we didn't place any conditions on her, but we were releasing her from conditions." So I suppose I could argue that, well, we weren't placing any additional restraints or conditions on yourself. But I can't see, in the email you provided at least, any evidence that they were waiving the six months' notice period. Was that otherwise separately provided to yourself?
They definitely were not waiving anything, and I think you can see in the confirmation in the letters I just referred to on December 16th, to Mr. Brian Belling, that if you, if I may refer you to page 23, and it very clearly states, "Australia Post does not agree with your assertion that post-employment restraints that apply to Ms. Holgate are unenforceable." They actually go on, and in the next letter, they offer to do a deal with me, and to say we will let her off her constraints if she agrees never to take legal action against us.
When is that correspondence?
That's the very next page.
It was page 23.
24th of December.
Right, okay.
Yes, page 24 and 25.
Okay, 24 and 25, sorry, thank you. Okay, thank you for that. I've just got a couple more, very quickly.
Senator, I'm sorry, Senator, may I add something which I think is very important? Australia Post Board has many lawyers on it, and they would be very aware, and I am not for one moment suggesting, by the way, I believe, on the night of October 22nd, the Chair unlawfully stood me down and took that action on his own account without involving the other board members. But the other board members are lawyers, and they would be aware that under fair work, that actually if somebody is on sick leave, which I was, and they were aware of, it was formally sick leave with a doctor, they, and they knew I was on tamazepam, and they knew I was suicidal, that when that is in a situation, they have an obligation of duty to, if somebody offers to resign, to test that that resignation is real. There was no testing. So the, the Chair never called me. The Chair never said, "Christine, are you sure this is really what you want to do? We know you are ill." None of that happened. I mean, I was sitting in a room with Brian Belling, my lawyer, Teresa, Max Kimber, and Ross Thornton. We sat and waited, and the only thing that we got was a phone call to tell us Sky News wanted to know whether the statement was real or not.
Before you had even released it.
Correct, 1.30. And by the way, Stephen, you can Google Sky News, 1.30, Christine Holgate, 22nd of October, and you'll see the story will run.
Just another, two quick things, and I know we're well over time, so I'll try and be quick. One of my big interests here is to make sure the good work you've done with the licensed post offices continues, regardless of, of governance changes or what have you. Do you think the relationship with Australia Post and licensed post officers would be helped by a representative of the LPOs being on the board of Australia Post?
I strongly believe that the Board of Australia Post should have a minimum of two Board Directors, one to reflect the stakeholders of the licensees, and one to respect the employees. Now, there is supposedly one Board Member who is representing the licensees and the employees, and that's Mr. Tony Nutt. Now, I'm sure some of you will have, be aware that I'm very happy for you to, in the break, to call Mr. Greg Rayner, who's the National President of the Union. I'm sure he will say to you, he's never heard of Mr. Tony Nutt. And Angela, I don't know if any Board Member has spoken to you, I know you've written to them, I know you've written to Mr. Rodney Boys, you've asked to meet with them, you've asked to meet with the Chair. What involvement have you had?
None. We have one email from Mr. Tony Nutt advising us that he could not talk to us.
Okay, well, thank you for that. And final, just final line of questioning, would you, knowing what you know now in hindsight, would you have bought the Cartier watches as rewards?
That's a big question, isn't it? Whoever thought we would be here, you know, I was, I, I think it was Peter Switzer ran the minutes of me speaking about it when it happened. It was clear, I watched it with Mike the other day, and it was clear I was very emotional on the news, because we had, we knew that we'd lose this, we'd lose Banker Post, we'd lose it in the post offices, we knew that would kill small businesses and kill communities. So I was emotional. And, you know, whether I'd probably buy the Maseco watch in future, Senator, probably. But am I proud of the moment that I gave those people recognition for working 24 hours a day? I think that's what you would want your CEO to do. And am I proud of what they did, working in hand in hand? And by the way, you know, Josh Frydenberg was a very large part of making this happen. Absolutely, I, without it, it would have been devastating. So I probably might buy the Maseco watch in future, but I hope I never step away for recognising and rewarding outstanding people.
Did you want to add something?
The licensees will be happy to buy the Cartier watches if we can get the Banker Post renewed.
This is more of a comment, I just, just, but I do want to put on record, I, well, I will ask it in the question, I mean, do you, do you have any understanding, you know, of the, some people's reaction to hearing of the Cartier watches? And I have said to you before, Ms. Holgate, I, at first, was disgusted by the purchase of the, the watches, and I know Senator Kitchen wrote a piece for the Herald Sun, where she said her, she couldn't believe her ears when you said that you'd bought such watches and had to pick herself up off the floor, and you said it wasn't taxpayers' money. So is there any, do you have any understanding of that, that reaction from many in the public, and including the, the Prime Minister or the Ministers, to hearing that executives have been bought such lavish gifts?
I'd like to just pick up a few points. The first point is, I cannot begin to tell you how many people wrote to me and said, "How did you get a Cartier watch for $5,000?" And I would like to know the sales of Cartier over Christmas period, because I was inundated with requests to say, "How did we negotiate it?" So that's number one. They were actually probably the cheapest four watches of Cartier they had, they were just different ones. I'm sorry, guys, who received them, it wasn't about the value, it was about the recognition. I absolutely understand, and I think if you go back, I do say in my statement on December, on November 2nd, I appreciate it doesn't pass the pub test for some, but the pub test that I was being judged against was handing out gold watches in the middle of a crisis. That's not what happened. The Prime Minister and the Minister at no point said this was for bringing in something transformational.
Two years earlier.
Two years earlier. I was told, in fairness, Senator, that he was not briefed properly. I hold the Chairman accountable for not briefing them properly. You will have to find it out yourself, what he said on the call. He told me he had, I just don't know. But personally, I would have hoped the Prime Minister of our country, especially when I've done so many other jobs, like still chairing his trade board, chairing the Australian Azim Board, may have afforded me a two-minute phone call.
To, to be fair, Ms. Holgate, it's not the first time the Prime Minister says he hasn't been briefed properly before behaving the way he does.
And can I add that the question was actually put to Mr. Fletcher?
Editorial or?
No, I just, I just correct something that we said before, that the question was put to Mr. Fletcher on the 22nd of October, made it very clear that the watches were purchased in 2018. It was an explicit question which referred to the date, so, but I've got another question I can follow through on.
If Mr. Fletcher did not know, it would have to, you'd have to believe that his staff did not tell him, because one of his...
Mr. Albanese did in a direct question in the House.
I, I, you know, I've got to be honest with you, Senator, I did not even watch the video of what happened until several weeks later, under the instruction of my doctor.
Excuse me, Senator Canavan, could I just put some perspective into it? It is $7.50 from every licensee, so every LPO, $7.50. It is an insignificant sum in a seven and a half billion dollar business.
And, and that is absolutely true in the cold light of day, but I do understand people's initial reaction to the word Cartier, et cetera, and we all operate in a political environment where those perceptions are relevant to our conduct and behaviour.
I appreciate that, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Canavan. Now, Ms. Holgate, you had previously indicated to the committee that you wanted to give some evidence in camera. Do you, do you still feel that that is relevant, or are you happy for us to continue?
I would like to do so. I don't think we need to take too long doing it, Senator.
Okay, all right. So just knowing that, Senator Kitchen, I know you've got some more questions. We are heading up towards the lunch break. I've just spoken to other members of the committee over the last little while. We are going to slide our other witnesses down the list. We have agreed to another hearing date, so those that we don't get to, we will bring back. I'm just very conscious that people still have questions for you.
The Department, not today.
And, so, Ms. Holgate, if, if you are able to stay for a bit longer, and then we will go to the lunch break, how long do you think you need, Senator Kitchen?
Probably, well...
Can you do it in 15 minutes?
I can do some of it, probably I'd have another five to 10 after.
Okay, well, let's try and, let's, let's try and get it, keep it to 15, because we do...
Senator?
Yes?
I'm prepared to come back later today, if that enabled you, after the in-camera session, that enabled you to be able to manage the timetable. I do appreciate how important this is.
Yeah, I think perhaps the suggestion from Senator Mackenzie was that after we hear from the Australia Post Board, that if we wanted to bring you back to get you to clarify. So thank you for that offer, and we will, we will consider that. I'm proposing that we go to 20 past 1:00. But I would like to, and have a lunch break at 20 past 1:00. I'm proposing that we go now until 10 past, and then we go into the in-camera session.
So can we stick to the timetable, if, if, given that there's flexibility later on?
We can have a vote.
No, we don't need votes, do we?
I don't have a problem.
Can I, can I propose that we go till 10 past 1:00 for now? And then we're going to, we've had a request from the witness to go into in-camera session. I'm suggesting that we go, continue in, in public session now until 10 past 1:00.
I'm okay with that, you okay with that? Sorry, yeah, the Chair was saying, public session till 10 past 1:00.
I'd like to be here for now. I'll try and move my...
If you, if you could, Senator Van, that would be helpful.
How long would we, till 10 past 1:00?
So in public session until 10 past 1:00, we go into the private session for 10 minutes, if we can keep it to 10 minutes. Senator Kitchen.
Thank, thank you, Chair. Ms. Holgate, can I just to go back? I just want to ask, just on the bonuses, I just want to clarify, you were saying that if you kept quiet about not receiving the bonuses, that you'd get them?
I think to be completely precise, there was, they agreed...
Who agreed?
To defer the board, and it would have been on the night of the 5th of August, and it would have been minuted on the 5th of August, that they would, it would have been minutized, that they agreed to defer the decision until, I'm not sure if it says this in the minutes, you have to go back and look, a lot's happened to me since, since August.
I, I have asked for some of the board minutes from estimates on the 23rd of March, but they haven't, none, actually, none of the questions I've asked to be taken on notice in estimates have been returned, so, from witnesses on that day. So just, so, can you just give me the, without looking at the, at the minutes of the board meeting, are you able to tell me what then occurred? So the board agreed that there would be no short-term incentives paid?
The, no, the board agreed that we would pay them for everybody under the executive team. The, the decision around the executive team would be postponed, and potentially, we had offered... And potentially, we had offered to give up 25% of our, you know, right effectively. I mean, it is a contractual right. We offered to give up 25% to be able to reflect the COVID quarter. And they actually offered, that there was the potential to be paid at 100%, not the 25%, if we supported the deferral of the decision. They did not make the decision, I'm sure if you see the minutes of that night, it will not say they've made the decision to definitely pay. They made the decision to defer the decision until, we were told at the October board meeting would be most likely, because that was after the time that we would have had the outcome of the Senate inquiry on the temporary regulatory relief. It is actually, I think, in some of my correspondence, but, you know, Theresa would have to find it. I think again, it's to do with that note, the letter from Brian Belling, do you think it's page?
So what we might do, if you're able, Ms Fullthorpe, to, to give us just very quickly, but later on, once you find them, just the pages that are relevant. I think that might be more time expedient.
Senator, what would help us, if you wrote down the questions?
I can do that.
And then what we could do is find the page for you of where it refers to it.
And, and I can also ask Mr McDonald, I assume, when he comes later today?
Mr McDonald was on the ET call on the 6th of August and took notes, but every member of the ET call were. And I have my own notes from that meeting here. I actually take notes through meetings.
So do I.
And, you know, it was very evident, if the temporary regulatory relief was not upheld, the executive team would not get their incentives.
Can I ask you just to move on to a different topic? You, you did say that you didn't, you had been told the Prime Minister wasn't briefed properly. Who told you that?
Numerous people in fairness, you know.
So people in government, people in ministerial offices, ministers?
Numerous people who purport to have a relationship with the, I can't see where Shaun is. Numerous people, you know, who have, purport to have a relationship close to the government. I, forgive me, Senator, but I feel that those people were trying to help me and I don't want to breach their confidence.
I understand that sentiment. But numerous people told you the Prime Minister wasn't really briefed properly? Okay, thank you. Can I just turn to your employment contract and thank you for tabling it? Could I ask you, I'm looking now at Section 10, and particularly Section 10.3. Were any of these subsections conveyed to you that you had breached one of these subsections?
No, they were not, and Senator, one of the things that surprised Sue Davis and I was that nobody asked Sue for a copy of my contract before they announced my stand-down.
Right. So, sorry, no one asked for a copy of?
Well, if we are to believe for one moment the evidence of the Chair, he said there was a board meeting, and at the board meeting, they agreed. And I believe in the Australia Post submission, I'd have to ask the Secretary. But there is a line that says, "We could have done it anyway, even if she hadn't have agreed." I think that's in the Australia Post submission. And that is actually not true. It was unlawful, what they did, under many different levels. And as you can see from the SC advice that I have given to you, that none of this was ever explained to us. And for them to stand me down, by the way, they have to actually manage the investigation. It wasn't their investigation, it was an investigation done by the government. There was, I had not done anything wrong. There was nothing that warranted this disciplinary action. They did not ask to see my contract before he made a statement to stand me down.
Right, so, and then, so that what, what was conveyed to you? I mean, if 10.3 wasn't referred to in correspondence, or even in a verbal, in a conversation you've, you had, what, what was the basis?
Well, nothing was conveyed to me that night when they announced it publicly, and to all of our employees. And nothing was ever explained, and I think Brian, who's with me, that was a very large frustration. We asked and asked and asked, why was I being stood down? There was no basis to stand me down. And all we ever got was eventually, after Brian put out a public statement, which we have in here, we got a response from the Chair. And if you give me one minute, I'll tell you the page to find that response. Do you think I remember it, the times we looked at it? It is on page 105 of my main submission.
Sorry, page 105.
I apologize to everybody in advance.
No, no.
We had to do this at home, so we don't have a team of 100 people. I realise that I put the front page on twice.
Just in terms of this, can we just go through, so I'm looking at the letter of the 29th of October.
That's great.
So her remuneration will continue, and she will remain down by the, all the terms and conditions of her employment. So did your remuneration continue?
It did at this stage.
And when was it stopped?
November the 2nd.
Okay, and now, Ms, now I'm going back to the, March the 23rd in estimates. I asked Mr Di Bartolomeo regarding sort of severance pay and things like that. You didn't receive any severance pay?
We, actually, Senator, I think it was your question or Senator Green's?
No, no, it was my question.
At the previous Senate estimates, there was a similar set of questioning. And I think following that, they wrote me a letter the next day and said, "Here are your statutory rights." And they asked me to same, sign the same condition.
So what statutory rights were they referring to? Because I think that in terms of unfair dismissal, you're over the threshold for the Fair Work Act to apply, so you'd have to go to the federal court.
No, it's the annual leave.
Okay, so all of those, so did you, because I asked those questions, did you receive your entitlements?
I've only received the annual leave what was owed to me. There was no explanation of it, that letter is also included in this, in here. It was addressed on November the 10th, and if you give me one moment, I'll tell you the page number.
Were you paid out prorata for any long service leave?
No, I was not. There is an argument to say that is actually what they're supposed to do, because I'm over the age of 50. Dare I say that to everybody?
So in on, so I asked about your entitlements. He said she, she received her due annual leave entitlements, yes, and nothing else. And he says no.
If I may find the letter for one moment.
What we might do, Ms Holgate, just because I'm going to run out of time, is perhaps?
I'll find you the letter.
Lovely, thank you. All of the other sub-points of this letter dated the 29th of October, were they, is this what happened? She will not be required to attend the workplace, she didn't carry out any duties, you didn't sign any documents? Did, who was responsible for removing you as a director? So who filled, was that Mr McDonald?
Nick McDonald, I don't know, because nobody ever asked me to sign anything.
Right, so you didn't sign anything post the 22nd?
No.
Of October, nothing?
No.
Okay. But these are all, are these correct, that these dot points on page 105?
I would have remained a director of probably some of the subcommittees, certainly of the organisation, but I never signed anything.
Do you know what date your directorship of the organisation was, was communicated to have ceased?
No, nobody ever told me.
I can ask, I'll ask Mr, Mr McDonald. Can I just go to the Maddox investigation? Who first, who first directly informed you that that would be occurring?
I'm going to have to look at Brian, I think.
You can take it on notice.
I can take it on notice, but I'm pretty sure it was Nick McDonald and that communication I would have. I don't think I've supplied it in here. I may have done, I will check in the break. He wrote the, they wrote to me and said, "And by the way, the Maddox thing is happening." On November the 3rd, the day after what had happened, I did receive a letter from Lucio, from the Chair. And, but it was a letter asking me to correct the Hansod. And from the 22nd of October.
Which bit of the Hansod?
Well, they sent me the whole Hansod, but they couldn't open the document.
Ah, no, I read that, I did read that in your, in one of your, in your submission.
Well, when I asked for help, they said, "It's public holiday, no one can help you." They gave me 36 hours. It was 48 pages long or something.
I don't understand it, because we can all see, I mean, it's obviously, you know, publicly available, it's on a website, for very good reason, because government should be transparent, which is precisely why I was asking questions about expenditure. You didn't, you couldn't go through a public, through the, just through the website of the committee?
Senator, I was lying on the bathroom floor at this time in my life. I had worked for these people every day through COVID. The day before, I'd given them a statement to try and show them I'm not trying to be disrespectful.
You wanted help from the organisation to look at the Hansod, and none of us forthcoming.
Exactly, and they told me it's a public holiday. And I asked to be able to open it and mark it up, and they said no.
Okay, can I just ask you, what was your assessment of the situation when your access to, to Australia Post emails? So your email was cut off, when, what date, do you know?
It was Thursday, November the 5th, the day they eventually put out the employee message.
And the investigators were given access to your private email? And what do you mean by private? Do you mean a Gmail account? What do you mean?
I, I don't know what they, they were given, they were given access to anything to do with me. In fact, only me, which always surprised me. That interview with Maddox took place between four and a half and five hours. I gave them, we, Brian made me prepare extensively.
Did Mr Belling accompany you?
Yes, and so did Sue Davis.
I'm just aware of the time, so I'm sorry I'm hurrying you, but were you concerned the, the scope of the review, the time, the timeframes, the turnover of your email, et cetera? What, what did you think at that point? Did you think that there was going to be, you know, enough latitude to produce findings that might be sought by the board?
It was a sham, the whole, whole review. It was supposed to be, in fact, the Prime Minister, I think, is quoted in Parliament for saying, "If there are issues with the board, they will look at them then." It was not just about me, it was looking at governance. Yet on the day I was interviewed, they hadn't even met with the General Counsel or the CFO. I was the only person who was subjected to that interview. I was the, my EA was interrogated and harassed. And we were treated like common criminals. Nobody actually looked at the other executive team expenses. And Senator, if I may, I have had to sit, and Brian knows, month after month after month, receiving requests late at night with long documents, 108 pages in font 7, asking me to go through and go through expenses, when actually each time I've done it, and I've just asked them to be clear, we actually gave, my EA and I, gave a very comprehensive answer back in September last year, that the Chair and Mr Tony Nutt chose not to give to you.
Ms Holgate, when you say "they," who do you mean? Who, who has sent you these requests, asking you to do this work, despite the fact that they've told the country you're no longer in the job?
It's come from Alens, under the instructions of the Chair and the CEO.
Thank you. Senator Kitchen.
Thank you. So you had to answer these questions overnight, your, your couns, your lawyer didn't, your solicitor didn't ask for a time extension?
We did, constantly.
Okay, and what happened to that?
Well, we, what happened was we were put in an incredibly frustrating process. Brian, you may record this better than me, but I'm sure it was early December by this stage. And effectively, there was 108 pages, and they wanted me to, it was every expense on both my credit card and the office of the CEO, which is just, is, by the way, I had never seen those expenses before, because they're signed off by the CFO, who's currently the acting CEO.
So can I ask, just on that, because it reminded me, that reminds me of something you said earlier. Did you sign off on the CFO's expenses?
No, I didn't, yes, I did, yes, I did.
So he signed off on yours, and you signed off on his?
That is true, that there is a governance process that has to go through. Everything gets audited, to be honest with you.
No, and we did go through the auditing standards at estimates in the 23rd, because I wanted to understand, really, actually, some, whether there had been a write-down, in fact. So I'll, I'll ask those questions again in budget estimates. But I really wanted-
Kitchen, we are about to move on.
I've still got about five more minutes.
We're gonna have to move into the private session, so just let.
So I just want to, well, should I continue?
Just after the, after lunch? No, no, we, we will, we might bring Ms Holgate back if the committee requires.
Can I just maybe put some yes and no questions?
Yes.
Were you given a copy of the Maddox report prior to it being released?
A draft copy, yes.
Was that draft copy in any way different from the final report that was produced?
Yes.
Who do you believe, this isn't a yes or no question, who do you believe made the changes? Amended the document from the draft you saw?
I would have to believe it was the departments, because we were told by Maddox on the Friday, I think the 21st of November, they would take no more correspondence. It was passed to the two departments.
Okay, and were those changes, were any changes made because you had suggested them? So did you go through the draft report and say, "Look, this is inaccurate," or "That doesn't really capture it"? And you made changes yourself, were any of those reflected in the final document?
No, there were not.
Did you make change, did you suggest some changes?
Yes, we gave extensive feedback.
And did you ever right-click on the properties and see who'd made the amendments? See whose document it was? I presume you received it electronically.
We have no, I have no knowledge of that.
So the, was the version largely the same, or not the same?
Finding six was in both copies. There were, we did not see every page, I should correct you, sorry, I should correct myself, Senator. We did not see every page of the draft review, we only saw pages which had my name in it. And if I recall correctly, Brian, it was about 37 pages that we saw, and-
Not, not the full 100?
No, and it's actually quite difficult then to follow. No, we didn't, no, maybe it was 74 pages. I will have it, so I can take it on notice and tell you later. Because I've actually even got the notes that we made. I was only given two hours to look at it.
Perhaps, Ms Holgate, if you would, if you would be prepared to take that on notice and give this committee what you understand to be the differences between the draft report and the final report. Senator Kitchen, we are going to have to finish now.
I did have one more question, just in relation to Mr Robbie Barwick, whom you've thanked in your state, in your first submission. Mr Barwick is associated with the Citizens Electoral Party, formerly the Citizens Electoral Council, and very much associated with the La Russite movement. The La Russite movement is highly anti-Semitic, and also has conspiracy theories around banking and who runs banking, so you can imagine how that fits with antisemitism. Do you feel, have, how much support has Mr Barwick given you?
I've had support from every political party, and I don't know anything about the Citizens Party. I'm going to be honest with you, Senator Kitchen, I'd never even heard of them before.
Well, Mr Barwick is associated with them.
Okay, now, Ms Holgate, you've asked to be able to give some evidence in camera to the committee, which is your right, so stay there. But we will ask the rest of the room to clear, but let me just be, to give everybody a sense of what will happen next. We are, after this, we are going to have, go to the lunch break. We will come back at 1:50, and we have changed around the agenda for the rest of the afternoon. We will bring the departments back at our next- We will bring the departments back at our next hearing. And we will hear after the lunch break from Ms. Suzanne Davies for a short period. She was summoned by this committee. We will hear from the Chair of Australia Post. We will hear from Australia Post and then we will hear from the LPO group. So that's how the rest of the afternoon will run. Thank you for giving us enough time to get through these important questions this morning. The media will of course be invited back in, in for after the lunch break. Thank you. So we'll just suspend while we clear the room.